Presidente of the United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, members, please.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay, here.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Gird.
Here.
Can you motion to approve the minutes, September 12 meeting?
Make motion.
You have a second?
Second motion.
You have a second, any discussion on the minutes? Any changes, additions, deletions? I believe there was one about two thirds of the way down where it says on the minutes, "Trustee Grenda asked about the possibility of repositioning the dock," I think that's Trustee Tremblay. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. That was me.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of approval should decide to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Let's pass. Presentation, petitions, communications, before we go on our special meeting which was last Monday, we will approve those minutes in the November meeting. Okay? That, presentation, petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick things. You know from the paper and probably know from the county treasurer that sales tax revenues are up again, and almost a little over half a million dollars. One of the things that when I was mayor, I always wanted to know how they were calculated, and it's based upon your assessment versus the county assessment. That's how it works out. So, using those figures, I, because I have a reason for giving this to you, using those figures and doing an extrapolation, of course, your budgetary year is, you know, June to May, and ours, of course, is calendar year. So, it's a long way out before we can make any predictions, but at current rates, you should be getting somewhere between three and four thousand, hopefully, over what you had budgeted, okay? Which is good, and, you know, the town is in a similar situation, so is Rouse's Point. Of course, in a year where you've got the property tax gap to worry about, it is something that can really help out. I did wanted to just comment, we haven't received all of our figures at the county, but we are, we told Mike Zerlo that 1.99 makes it and 2.0 doesn't, and so, and whether or not, you know, if you read in the paper, or you probably did, both Essex and Franklin County are considering going over the property tax cap, which requires a separate vote, and then voting on the budget to actually go over it. And I don't think you'll see that in Clinton County. And one of the reasons why, and this was a, and I just wanted to comment on this, this was a painful decision for me, I think I alluded to it earlier, but I don't think we've actually held the final vote yet. On the issue of home health care, once, I was able to get assurances both from the highest bidder, and also from the people that will actually be implementing the program, that all the nurses, all the physical therapists will be hired, and that want to be hired, and that they will be seeing the same clients. That was probably the biggest thing. All, I would say ninety percent of the phone calls that I received were people that had concerns, they not only wanted the program to continue, they were concerned that it would not continue. And there are many, many people up in Area 1 who receive those services, but they also wanted the same person, and there's nothing wrong with that. You know, and so, and the only guarantee I could say is that if that person chooses to continue their employment, they would have that same base. But just to give you an example, you know, we were losing about 1.9 million dollars a year for that program. And programs that have, initially that program started as a moneymaker, now there were changes in Medicare, Medicaid, and so on, which affected that. But this is the kind of scrutiny that every single department, you're going to see it over the next couple of years in government everywhere, and I'm sure you guys at budget time are going to be going through the same process of looking at every single thing. And all this has not come out in the paper, we also received 2.1 million for the license for home health care. So, that's another reason why, now that probably will not kick in for at least another year and a half, so, but saving 1.9 million dollars a year is going to be a tremendous benefit to the people of Clinton County. And at some point, when you're working on things like this, you have to just say, this is the amount of money we are taking in, you prioritize the way you're going to spend it, and you move on. And with these kinds of figures, it was pretty overwhelming, and you probably saw the vote in the paper. I did want to comment on the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, we voted in the last couple of years to have an occupancy tax in Clinton County, and that occupancy tax has totaled about $440,000 this year for the promotion of the area. And they just did their presentation to the county as they renew their contract, and we have become one of the top 100 places on the, there's a national bus tour circuit where people go all over the nation, and Plattsburgh and Clinton County have become one of the top 100. It will coincide with some of the events that are going on here, most specifically the 2012 Battle of Plattsburgh celebration. But they also have, there's going to be snowmobile events at the Crate Center, there's going to be six pro fishing tournaments scheduled, and that's where the occupancy tax, you know, you can't get a room in Plattsburgh during those. And two of them are, I have not seen them, but are actually broadcast on ESPN2, so, and so it, you know, promotes the area too. And that's, the only reason I voted for that tax was because it was dedicated, was a dedicated tax specifically for a purpose, which was to run out the area, not going into any general coffers. There's also going to be an Adirondack Wine Festival in Clinton County in 2012, so that's been here, and that's something that's brand new. And finally, there are many biking events, which leads me to resurrect an issue which has been around, for those of you that were here three and a half years ago. We met with the town supervisors of Moores and Champlain, and we met with the mayors in Rouse's Point and Champlain, and we applied for a grant for a bike path. This would be on the old Rutland Railroad from Rouse's Point going all the way to Moores. Moores, at this point, is no longer feasible, but it is still feasible for us to look at the issue of running it from Rouse's Point to the high school, and from Champlain up to the high school. And so, there is another grant, I don't know whether we're going to make the first round, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that. Basically, it is up to $400,000, the grant, but it has to be matched, that will require each community to spend 16 cents for every dollar we got. So, you'd spend 16.66 cents, Rouse's Point would spend the same thing, and the town of Champlain would spend the same thing. Now, knowing the scrutiny that all budgets go through, this is probably not a great time to be talking about a bike path. But in all honesty, I see this as something that could bind this community even more together, it certainly would work in the wintertime. I don't know whether I have to sell any of you, we got a letter of commitment from this community the last time around, as we did from Moores, the town of Champlain, and the village of Rouse's Point. And I won't be asking for it now, or even in the immediate future, but what it means is that you would be called upon to come up with probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 worth of services. Now, what does that mean? That means it could be in-kind service. You guys could be, it's on the old Rutland Railroad base, you could be out there clearing brush. We, the community, Rouse's Point has talked about getting their community members together and clearing brush and so on. The base would be good, and we could offer that as in-kind services and so on. So, it doesn't have to be a dedicated amount of money. But I just wanted to give you a heads up, I know your budget is six months away, and that's a long time from now, but I am pursuing this, this is something that I've been after since 1996, when I first proposed it at the town level, and I still think it's something that would be very good for the community, and it would allow, and even more so, children for years there at the high school, we've seen them bike up on the golf course road, and also on some of the back roads here in June, and these roads are not fit for children to be on for biking, and here would be a chance to get a paved area to go right up to school and so on. So, in any event, I just wanted to mention that.
Larry, if you could just keep in mind with that.
Yes.
I would like to see it go all the way to McDonald's. If you didn't notice, there's a ton of people that walk or ride bikes to McDonald's, that work right here in our community, and especially going over this bridge is an extremely hairy situation.
Yeah.
And I know the bridge is going to be redone, but to keep that in mind with that project.
Okay. I don't know where the old Rutland crosses.
I don't either, I have no idea.
You, I assume you're talking about going under the interstate, and then up in the northern part of the village, and then up in the back of McDonald's, is that what you're saying?
I don't, I don't know how it runs, so I don't know how the plan was, but...
Because you wouldn't be able to, yeah, okay.
If there's a way to incorporate that, because we do have a safety issue, I believe, there.
Yeah, well, I think that it goes from Oak Street, and then it goes all the way in the back, and I'm not sure, I think it goes, crosses the river, that's another issue, you know, and so on, but no?
No, it goes, it goes up across Oak Street, and goes up behind the milk plant, the old milk plant by acre, and goes up the back way.
So, it doesn't cross the river at all?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
All right.
And the same way over here on the industrial, the industrial park, where they put the first big mason building.
Right.
That's right over where the rail track was.
Okay.
So, that cut it right off.
Well, the beauty of that, of course, is the base is, at least it has to be checked out, but the base is good, and you can put and count them down. The last thing I just wanted to comment on was the airport, as you probably know. We are interviewing a couple of people for, we had a resignation by our director, and we are in a situation where we are interviewing two people this Friday, and we hope to have somebody onboard very soon, because we do have this $25 million expansion that's coming for the airport and sized it, so that our airport will be sized at about 250,000 people, as opposed to the current 100,000 that we have now. And we see that as a real possibility. So, be happy to answer any questions that anybody has about the county or anything I've said. Go.
I have some more questions on the Medicaid issue. What can we do at a local level to monitor the Medicaid expenses? There seems to be no checks and balance in place. Providers can charge for Medicaid, but it's never brought back to the persons using the service to audit whether that expense actually took place.
Okay. Are we talking Medicare or Medicaid?
Medicaid.
Okay, sorry. I don't know the answering question, but I'll certainly...
Yeah, it's definitely something that I'd like to get more information on, and I know you have nothing to do with the DDSO eliminations of the jobs there. How it was reported in the paper was false reporting, too, which kind of concerned me, it had nothing to do with the contract. These positions were eliminated due to budget cuts. And these roles that these providers give to the community are critical, and without these Medicaid coordinators, families are left without assistance. That's critical, absolutely critical. And the choices to replace with are agencies that don't have a long-term relationship with their employees, the turnover is constant and it's high, leaving families without the services that keep them afloat. We're trying to keep families together and take care of this population that needs it, and with these cuts, I know cuts need to be made, but we need to really think about them.
All right, I'll get back to you now.
Okay.
Anything else?
A new carrier for the airport?
We're always hopeful, we're, at this point, we don't have one, but Cogan Air, of course, is, they have to stay until we get one. And one of the problems that Cogan Air has experienced, which I think has hurt them, is that fares have gone up.
Significantly.
And significantly, and they started off in the upper 50s and low 60s, and now it's well over $120, $130. And, you know, I mean, they're at a point now where they're getting the money for the essential air service, but they don't, it doesn't really benefit them that much. I have a feeling that we will, Gary Douglas is fantastic in terms of marketing, and I have a feeling that we will have another carrier. We're still hoping to get that Las Vegas connection, because I think that that one will really, the Canadians, it will save them so much money to come down here and go through the United States to get there and so on, rather than using Montreal. So, that's the biggest one, that's the one we see as the one, but, you know, we're not there yet, and again, as you read in the paper, we've had a few bumps in the last month and a half here, two months, on the airport. And, you know, it's, we're looking for new leadership, and either of the two individuals we're interviewing, I think, would do an excellent job. We're looking forward to Friday to see how that goes. Okay? Anything else? Okay. I am doing Rouse's Point for the meeting, it's very nice that you guys have 6:30 and they have 7:00, so I can run over there and redo the whole thing, so, very good, everybody. Thank you. All right, good night.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
My turn.
Go ahead, sure.
I just had a quick question regarding, how was the rock and the bench resolved?
The rock and the bench, we had the opportunity at the meeting last Tuesday to talk to some representatives of the Controller's Office, as well as the legal department of NICOM. And I will, I'll quote here, this is from NICOM, "In this case, the stone belonged to the current owner of the real property, and the village would have bargained for the stone. The current owner gives the village the stone in exchange for a parked bench. The only restriction would be that the exchange be of fair value. I looked back in the records, and I couldn't find anything to deal with that stone in terms of when the property was sold." So, the assumption here is that the owner of the property, the current owner, Mr. Payette, was the owner of that stone. So, in dealing with them, bargaining for the stone, which was important to be maintained, I think, and kept by the village and the park, the request for Mr. Payette as an exchange was to put a parked bench where the, where the stone was set. And in, in both cases, with the legal department of NICOM and with the Controller's Office, both areas felt that this was a exchange of fair value.
So, the bench cost how much?
$385.
Plus man-hours, cement?
Yes, it wasn't that much. And the stone being, I think, of significant value to the village, I think this was a, I think this was a fair value trade.
Had you had any other additional conversation with the people who control the trucks on Elm Street?
No, we haven't had any complaints about them.
It hasn't stopped.
They're still parking?
They're still parking.
I will make the calls tomorrow. I'll call Mr., uh, who's the gentleman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll call Mr. Yell tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep. And the signs? The speed reduction signs?
I hadn't noticed. I noticed one that says we lost...
Speed reduction signs aren't up yet, because they have to go into town.
Right, they're going into town. And we have some paperwork here from the county dated... This is a request that I, from Allen Miller, the county. Please find following, notice of order for Elm Street from Route 11 to the village of Champlain Village Line, there is a 30 mile an hour zone on which that stretch of the road, as of 11/6/95. So, that was already a 30 mile an hour zone, it wasn't, the town has not listed it as such, but we are putting, with conjunction, or in conjunction with the town, we are putting up the two speed signs ahead. And it's on the town property, so we have to get some cooperation from them.
Those are the signs you've put up now on the town property?
Yes. And they've agreed to reimburse the village for the signs.
Them signs aren't up yet, what signs are you referring to? Two or three at their four on the double post?
Yeah, welcome in.
That's at the village's limits?
Yes.
The marker on your lawn and the marker on my property, my marker is right behind that telephone pole, goes across and goes on and on. Thank you.
My turn?
Your turn.
I don't know, how do you talk to them about the water bill?
They have received the, the request in their, in their...
Sorry about the grammar.
Information. No, that's fine. Let me find it real quick.
And there's an update, I just found out from Tiny, which he just told me yesterday, that that water meter was sitting in water at the trailer.
That doesn't make a difference, it's, it's a water meter that's, it's waterproof, that's why they're in pits. It can be in water right up to the top of the ground.
Well, no, because Mr. Martin told me if there's moisture, even like in my basement, it's going to stop those meters.
No, the old meters, the new meter you have in your house, that, the new meter that was put in with the remote on the outside with the touch gun.
Yeah.
That is waterproof one.
I'm talking about the...
Both of them are waterproof.
The big, the big one?
Even on the high committed, it's going to measure the water, it's just not going to send the message to the outside.
The, the old ones would measure, it would still turn inside the pit, but sometimes if it gets wet, it wouldn't, the continuity wouldn't send it through to the outside register.
Right.
Now, if the wire gets broke, the minute we hook the wire up, it automatically gets what's on the meter in the pit.
But we got a problem. Why is my bill so high? There's no leak.
But you did have a leak on that side of the trailer.
Yeah, but Tiny caught it that day.
I don't know, but...
The leak probably, what, five, 10 minutes? And then him and Jim took the meter out of the hole, shut the water off, went down to Ace and got the valve and the check valve, and put it on, and turned the water back on, there you go. $500, come on. I don't mind paying a bill, but not $500.
The meter only spends the water goes through.
Well, something's wrong somewhere, I'm telling you.
Do you have a request from Mrs. Demarest requesting insu-er credit? We can handle this under business. We can have the discussion now if you like. If you have any questions for her, take a moment.
Well, what I'd like, I'd like to see with this, I'd like to see another bill come through, since you had an old meter, a lot of these meters weren't reading properly.
I'm thinking of a new meter since of April 2010. 2010.
There's been a couple readings on that meter.
Oh, I was reading this April 2011.
Yep.
Okay.
4/13/10, the meter.
Yeah, it's, it's hard with leaks, because, you know, you think you catch it at the beginning, I know I had my hot water heater spewing all over my face, you couldn't catch it for several days. So, you know, it's really hard to determine when the leak actually started, I mean, this is a huge jump, which does lead to the fact that probably was a leak somewhere, a significant leak.
Nope, I got a bill here from Eddie Hicks on the 21st, he was underneath there fixing some pipe for me. It was something to do with a hot water tank, and he doesn't use, he doesn't do repair gas, and I had to call Chad a week after, and that's after you did a reading. And there was no leaks underneath there.
Well, the leak would have happened before the meter was read, it was read on the 14th.
Mm-hmm.
And Chad and Mr. Hicks was in after that?
Eddie was in the 21st.
So, that was a week after.
Yeah, and everything was fine.
The meter had been read prior to that.
Yep.
When the leakage was, when the increased number was loaded at that point, and we went back and reread it on the 26th.
Yeah, and Chad came a week after the 21st, because he had to fix the hot water tank because it's gas, and Eddie don't touch gas. And he had to crawl in there, and he said there was no leaks underneath that trailer. And their bill usually run about 118, tops 128, and there's only two of them in that trailer, and they've been there three years.
Was it possible that the toilet was leaking?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't be leaking underneath the trailer if the toilet was leaking, right?
Nope. There was no leak.
Larry, when you guys reread on 9/26, what did you find?
Is the number down there?
No, you have a 9/14 read. It was, you had written okay, meaning the meter was okay. If it's next, so it's okay, because I don't take up the extra number. So, were you seeing that they were using it the same rate, or was it backed down to the normal rate?
It's at the normal rate.
Okay, so it had to be some kind of leak.
Because if there was a leak, Eddie and Chad would have seen it, and they would have heard it.
Well, if there isn't a leak, then there's really no discussion here, because it's, it's water you use, so that we wouldn't want their credit.
Well, there's no way they can use $500 worth of water, there's no way. They don't wash their vehicles.
Did you water a garden this year? Yeah, were you watering a garden or anything, because it was a hot summer?
Nope, not even enough to do with the trailer. That's, that's over to the trailer that I rent.
Do they have a garden hose up?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, they're not even hooked up to it, nope.
I've had that happen myself, and it's cost me a lot money.
How many people are in that trailer?
Two. And they've been there three years, and they paid a bill in the seventh month, it was $118 and some odd cents.
Well, they could have had a running toilet and not reported it.
No, she would have reported it to me. Because if I find it was their fault, they'd be paying this bill, not me.
Are the meters calibrated? Are they certified as calibrated as correct?
Yeah, 99.8%. It's brand new.
They're totally on.
The, the older meters, they, they wear, so more water goes through the older meters than what actually turns on the hood. Yeah. They're good for ten years.
Because mine over to the house even went up, $100 different than my other normal bill, because I do have a garden, and it comes from my plane, but I have a barrel, but like, you stated that my toilet leaked, and I went, no.
You said you changed, I said, you said you changed your...
I remodeled my bathroom last year, and I put in, because the old toilet took so much water, so I updated to today's world, so my bill should be less. And I just bought a washing machine, so it's going to even take less water. So, I should see a difference there, too. But we're talking about the trailer, because I did use the hose for my garden off and But $500, no way. And they don't have no kids.
His feet ages?
Nope. All hers are all gone. I mean, I don't mind paying my bills, you know, I've always paid them, been there 25 years, but when I had two plumbers there, and they, they're telling me there's no problems. And the reason why we had Chad at the house for the, the hot water tank, because we were having problems with the pilot light.
But that was after we read the meter.
I had Eddie on the 21st, and then I had Chad a week after.
Yeah, it was after the meter read, though.
Yeah, I didn't even know that you read the meter, so...
Long before that, right, something happened before that, you had the three-month period of time of something happening.
Yeah, but, no, you're missing this, because if there was a leak with two plumbers, they would have told me, listen Tina, you got a leak underneath this trailer, because they were crawling where all my pipes are, they have to crawl there.
Right.
So, they would have been in water.
But that's if the leak was there.
Pardon me?
That's if the leak was under the trailer, I mean...
Where else would it be? All the plumbing's on that one end.
The leak was repaired.
What if there was another leak, though? What if, what if there was a, a toilet that was leaking that you weren't aware of? I mean, it had to be going someplace to run that meter.
Nope, I asked them, their toilet, it's fine. Tiny went underneath there to check, and there's nothing wrong with the toilet, there's nothing wrong with the tub or the sinks.
When did you have the leak fixed in front of the trailer?
Oh, yah, 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 it's gone.
That was before we read the meter. And then we read the meter, and then you had Chad, and you had Eddie. So, Chad and Eddie would be right out of the picture, because that's after the fact that we read the meter, and you repaired it before the, we read the meter.
Tiny fixed that after Chad was there. Tiny fixed that after Chad was there. And that was about...
So that point.
About a, about a couple of weeks after.
After we read the meter?
Well, I don't know when you read the meter.
On the fourteenth.
We read the meter the day that we went and checked yours in the cellar, because you had used more water, that was the same day.
Oh, no, no, Tiny fixed that a long time way before that. My God, he fixed that before we even got the last bill, not this bill, but the bill before that.
Yeah, it would be, it would be, you got the bill for the, in the middle of June, the end of June.
July's bill.
The July bill.
Yeah, Tiny got the, he fixed it before July bill came out. That's what we can't figure out. And like I said, Jim was taking a shower, and she thought he left the water on in the bathroom, because she could hear it running, and we were getting ready to go somewhere for dinner, and then she hollered, and she said there was water running.
Could have been between the period of time of six fourteen and then July building?
The meters usually get read between the tenth and the fifteenth, sixteen.
Well, you have a fourteen, a June fourteenth reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then a September...
And, but the bill, the bill was out.
The bill doesn't go out to July, so if there, if he was repairing a leak then, could all that water have leaked in that short period of time from the fourteenth?
Oh, yeah.
Is it insane?
Yeah, but then he did a reading on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-sixth.
Or twenty-second.
We went, we checked on the twenty-second to make sure that it wasn't spinning.
That's right, so...
Where's the, where's the reading on the twenty-second?
It says we read on the twenty-sixth.
And they were even home when you came and, and read that.
That's September twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah, we're talking about June, between June, the last two weeks of June.
Exactly, I'm talking about the last two weeks of June, you're saying you did have a, a leak repaired, and what I'm saying is that's probably where all this water was from that June fourteenth reading.
No way.
After the fourteen.
After the fourteenth. And it did have a leak, I mean, it's in the same meter period.
Well, that's an awful lot of water.
It is.
And Eddie was underneath there the twenty-first, so he would have been sitting in mud.
Yeah, but that's September, not, we're talking June, that your leak had to have happened in the last two weeks of June, and he was under the trailer on September twenty-first, and then Chad was under there on the twenty-eighth, a week later.
Right.
So that you wouldn't be wet from three months ago.
That's a lot of water.
It, it is amazing when you get a leak, how much water pours out of your butt.
Yeah, but then the insulation would have been saturated, because the pipes go underneath the trailer, there's insulation underneath there.
Well, where, where was the leak that was occurred?
It was...
In front, right?
It's right in the front, you open up the door, and it was a shut-off and a check valve. And Tiny went over, and he just barely touched it, and it started to drip, and him and Jim went, and they pulled the thing out of the ground, shut the water off, he went down to Ace, got the stuff, came back, put it together, then turned the water back on, no problem.
That's the one you were referring to in the front?
Yes.
Never had no problems with water before.
Yeah, the credit, just to do a credit, and we started a policy, I think it's been a year now, that we're, we're not offering the credits because it became...
On the water.
On the, no, period, on the credits. Um, and, and without a leak, we really have no justification to give you a credit. I mean, i- if this water was going into the ground, it's a different story, but if this water's going back into the sewer system, we're having to pay to process it anyway.
Yeah, but I shouldn't be stuck paying for something that nobody can answer what's going on. I wanna know what's going on. I don't wanna keep paying this every three quarters, you know, every three months.
Well, that's why when they went back on the twenty-sixth and they read the meter, it was recording back to your normal...
Rate.
Your normal rate. So something happened, obviously you had a leak of some sort somewhere of significant amount, and maybe that valve in the front that you're talking about really had been leaking for a while, your husband just caught it at that time, and, because there is no other justification for this, I mean, Larry, do you have any other idea of what would
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, because like you said, he got underneath
Ninety point nine percent accuracy on these things.
And none of the insulation was wet, because they checked that.
If you look back to the four previous quarters, there's an increase, aggressively increasing, something was developed in there.
Yeah, but not forty thousand, I mean, I definitely see the, there's definitely an increase in use of water.
That's a lot of water.
I know, I know, I mean...
Even a thousand, six thousand to seven thousand.
I could fill up a pool. It didn't even cost me that much to fill up my pool when I had it.
Even toilets took a day or two. What, what was our estimate that we...
Eighty gallons a day for a toilet, ninety degrees of seventy-two gallons, that's forty thousand.
Well, remember, up on Oak, uh, Valix?
Yeah.
They were in Florida, and their toilet leaks, it was gargantuan.
That's what I heard.
So, a- and you know what? You don't, you don't hear some of the toilets, sometimes they come on, they come off, they come on, they come off, you don't pay attention to it, you let go, it stops, no big deal.
But see where the water runs in? The sewer's right there, right next to it, and the toilet's right there.
You have a separate sewer?
Pardon me?
You have a separate sewer?
No.
No.
You have a separate sewer.
Yeah. Where the lines run from the road, they run side by side from each other, and the toilet's like right there. So is the tub. Because that's what we thought too, and Tiny, you know, we went in, we checked everything, and everything's fine. Hot water tank's fine. I don't know, I can't figure it out.
Well, the good thing is the fact that reporting at the lower rate now, but it's a matter of not knowing what happened in that time period.
Now, could it be leaking? Let me ask you this one, could it be leaking where that reading, that meter is in that manhole? Because it is, it's got water in there, a lot of water.
Well, yeah, they all have water, but it's not, it's not spinning now, so if it was still leaking when we pulled the cover, it, it, there's a little dial on the left at ten o'clock on that meter, and that little dial would be turning, and that's why we, when we pull them, if that dial's turning, we go right to the house and knock and say, you know, you got something running, or you got a leak someplace.
Right.
I have one in Mattalane right now doing the same thing, it's in a meter pit.
Because Tiny said he's never seen that much water in that manhole before.
Yeah, they, they have.
Because it's got insulation in there.
Ninety, ninety percent, it's all ground level.
The ground's right now.
That, that's why they're waterproof heads.
The ground is saturated.
Well, I don't know, I can't figure it out. And that's an awful lot of money for me to be popping out.
I know when we go read the meters, we bring them back to Donna, if we notice, I write the numbers in the book, so ninety-five percent of the time, I'll notice if it's high, and I'll say, read that one again if it doesn't seem right, and Donna, I put a little check mark in front of that, we recheck it.
Yep.
And then she'll put little tags on the book, and then we'll go out and recheck on the main shore and pull the meter pit or whatever it is, and we'll knock on the cellar.
Hey, Larry, do you think in, in, that, in this case, that it is, uh, a, a leak that something's going into the ground, or is there any way to guess on this?
My best guess is that it was related to a leak that was occurring from...
And that's what I'm thinking too, stuff going into the ground.
That would have been a ground leak, that's only my best guess, based on the facts and the numbers, the dates.
The ground's all saturated right now, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, but Jesus, that's a lot of water.
No, it doesn't take...
Like I said, I mean, I didn't even take that much water to fill my pool. But I used to have.
You wanna wait that to new business to make a motion here, or do you want to finish it up now?
We can do it now. One way or the other.
Yeah, I make a motion to, to do a sewer credit in, in the amount of two hundred and forty dollars, um, assuming that this water poured back into the ground based on the leak in the front of the trailer.
Second.
Second, any other discussion about this? Go call vote, please.
Um, Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Gazzenda? All right, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty, Eric?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
So, how much is my bill?
So subtract two hundred and forty from your bill.
You'll, you'll get billed for the full water and just the sewer on the six thousand gallon, you have the credit for...
I'll forget.
So this year, you'll just subtract two hundred and forty dollars from this total, all this total over here.
We can move on.
Report their first.
Two forty.
Easter time, two forty.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fleming was here, or called earlier, uh, regarding American Legion uses,
Thank you.
What he sees, or what he would like to see, uh, as uses for the American Legion. He asked to be put on the agenda to speak to the board. He called this morning and said that he would not be able to make it, and would be putting him on the agenda for next month, is that correct now?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Fleming will be put on, uh, next month's agenda, and present his, uh, present his thoughts on, uh, American Legion. Hey, Mr. Tatro?
Um, not very much, new, two building permits, sent out a couple letters for, uh, compliance issues, um, the old church, we're waiting for a, uh, return response from him to send certified, it goes to Canada, and this takes forever, a year to get, by the time he signs it, it gets back here, so I expect by next month we'll have the answer that, where he acknowledged the letter, and probably at that meeting, you'll be able to set some sort of public hearing where, again, we'll have to send him another letter inviting him to come, and at that time, you can probably set some timelines as to what you want done with the building. Uh, we did the engineering report, um, no response from him, so, I mean...
Now, if he does not respond, we can still set up a public hearing and proceed from there, whether he responds or not, in relation to this property.
Yeah, you can set a timeline of how much time you, you're gonna allow him to address the issues, and if after that time he doesn't comply, then you're gonna have to go to condemnation procedures.
How long does it take?
Everything is always thirty days at a time, um, I'm not quite sure, I have to read the code, but generally it's a thirty-day timeframe.
Well, it's going to take us a plenty of time to set it.
Yeah.
Paul, what we need to do to take that building down?
Um, the issue on, uh, Moore Street, I put a stop work order on, on that project. The reason for that is the timeline has expired according to the zoning law, he has one year to reestablish the use, which would have been a single-wide mobile home, it's been a year and a half, it's not been reestablished, so I put a stop work order, order on it, apparently Dad ignited a firestorm, so...
Have you received the, kind of, the notice of plan?
Yes, I saw it. So we're just gonna have to work through that one. The guy up on, uh, Oak Street, with the old stone foundation, he called me last week, and he's still removing some unfounded junk that he found up there with his backhoe.
There's piles, there's lots of piles of stuff.
He thought it was just dirt, topsoil that was piled, apparently it's all debris and junk that was from the property, so he's dealing with that, plus with the rain, he says it's impossible to move with his machine, there's quite a grade back there.
Right.
So I did inform him that we are looking to get that building either torn down or rebuilt, and he, he knows it, but, like he said, he's doing the best he can, at le- least he's working on it, so, I mean, it'll take him some time, but, so that, that's moving forward, and he, he knows he's gotta do it, so I don't anticipate any problem with, you know, getting this done, other than probably time.
Now, is the, the house itself, the shell that's left, is that, that's not any danger to anybody, it's solid.
Well...
So what is the concern to tear that down if we give them time to clean, you know, rebuild it? The yard needs to be cleaned up, no question, there's mounds of garbage all around it, there's what, six or eight miles, I was there Saturday, it, it just filled with, as I said, it's not dirt, it's metal, it's everything.
Well, that's what he found and tried to clean up around there.
And it shows, he, there's definitely movement there, it's, it's cleaner than I've ever seen it, but now we've got the...
The building itself is, it's not structurally sound with the, the gable ends open, there's no framing to hold anything in place, so someone could be on the property, uh, it, it's similar to the place on Church Street, you know, stone could fall off, it's a vacant building, you know, I mean, you don't know what kids are gonna do these days, so...
I was just curious if it was, because it looks sound.
Basically, it's an unsafe structure.
Okay, I was curious.
But things are moving forward?
Yes. Other than that, about it.
Property on South Street, one seventy, what is it, seven, so he's unmoated, it's, it's a field, and it's so unfair to the neighbors, um, it's been mowed once this whole summer.
Ellis.
We...
Ellis. Vacant house, a couple walked out, left it, nobody's doing anything with it.
There's a couple of them like that, you know, the village mowed them earlier, but I mean, I don't know how many times you want to mow.
Yeah, I'd like to see it before the winter to cut down these last few, and Champlain Elementary, they never came for the hay, or wheat, or whatever the excuse was, if they didn't mow half the property, it's all, uh, field back there, it needs to come down.
I had wet knocked on a couple doors, we got one on South Street. The one over there, the bank has that.
I know.
The realtor, when I called them, they didn't do anything, I had it mowed once.
I saw that.
So I was waiting for a good frost, and after the frost, if they're not, we'll knock them down, then it won't go back again.
Okay, yeah. Because of that house and everything inside of it now, you know, we're...
The elementary school, that's a, that's a different story, you'll have to get somebody nearby with a sickle bar or a carmón, or a good, a good push hog.
But we gotta keep to the standards, I mean, this is what we, we established, and it's gonna be across the board. Plus we get, you know, a few, I mean, the one on Oak was the one, but Tetra's on the corner, he's got piles of garbage, Clark seemed to clean up nicely, um, but on the corner there, if you look along the whole edge of the property, there's just mounds of junk. No, Clark's is much better, definitely has seen improvement, Tetra, Jimmy Tetra.
Well, he's got his equipment and structure.
He's got his equipment and stuff there.
Yeah, but there's piles of junk out there, it's not equipment, it's not equipment that's sitting out there, if you look at along the whole side there, it's just junk.
It's like a staging area.
It is. And we're not supposed to have that, so I mean, we need to be consistent across the board.
Any other questions for Michael? Hey, my report, uh, hydrant flushing is this week, you may notice some discoloration in your water over the next few days, this is normal when we flush hydrants, and it should clear up very quickly, if not, please call the office and we'll have a chip. The Village of Champlain will be collecting property taxes until November first, two thousand and eleven, after that date, they will be turned over to Clinton County for collection. The community garden growing season has come to an end, uh, I think consensus is that it's, uh, it was a very successful endeavor for those who participated, and we are looking for a larger garden, or to have a larger garden next spring, so that we'll have more growing space and hopefully more participation. Scheduled pickup days for fall debris, eleven-three and eleven-four, and eleven-seventeen and eleven-eighteen, all debris should be placed in clear plastic bags, leaves and small branches only, please, no garbage in the bags, they will not be picked up. And that's all that I have. Trusty Trombley? Trusty Gazzenda?
The only brief report, uh, just the, the increased, uh, presence of law enforcement in the Elm Street area, um, apparently appears that our local residents have gotten what it's all about, but the truckers don't. It's just apparently they're not afforded to our, uh, seems to be, uh, slowing down with very little effect, but most passenger vehicles have seemed to have taken their speed down a little bit lower, but, uh, truck traffic is still a point to issue. One pretty obvious ob- observation is certain trucks that are passing through that area, we discussed it at the last month's meetings, they're using Elm Street as a shortcut from Route eleven to either access, uh, truck stop or crossing to Canada. It's really not too much you can control, uh, it's something that we'll have to possibly look at other ideas, there is no, uh, there is signage for no-through truck traffic. Then, once, if they're not doing any business on Elm Street, and they start at the top and they go to the bottom, by the bottom, they're going pretty well, so... they go to the bottom, by the bottom they're going pretty well. So...
I'd say probably no prospect.
Yeah. But thankfully, the presence of law enforcement has helped calm down the race or drag strip of Elm Street.
Do you have?
That will be all.
Other district being twenty?
Trustee Trombley? Thank you. I have very little village business report. It's been pretty quiet. But I just wanna thank the community for, it's a community related report only. Thank the community for their outpouring of support to that food drive that was ran by the Knights of Columbus. It was overwhelming. And I thank them for their support for that. It's, it was an example of people helping people. It really was. And it was really heartwarming to see the little kids that got involved. Children love to do that. That's the deal. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Gary?
The Halloween community party. I'm changing it from being a costume party. We're gonna mix it up this year and have it more just of a, a party situation. You come in your costumes. The time is changed to 3:00 to 4:30 on the 29th, Saturday, October 29th, because I got someone to come in and play Halloween music. So, we'll have Erie music playing. We'll have a bunch of games the kids can play, just move around station to station, just to have a good time. So, I would like to add to the agenda today to ask for some money so I can make up some posters to put around the community and at the schools. Usually it's a dollar a poster for the nice, make it colorful to get community there. And some money for Donuts and Cider to serve. So, I'm thinking maybe fifty, sixty dollars. And we have sixteen hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents in the Village Fest Fund, A7989.4.
Bring that up under business?
So, October 29th, 3:00 to 4:30 at St. Mary's Academy for all children. Just a nice get together for a Halloween party. Families come. Come in costume.
It was a good, it was well attended last year. Morgan, I got to go.
With the judges.
Okay. Anything else here?
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Report from the Port Treasury, please?
Everyone has the express revenue report for September. I think we're doing very well. We also had a water and sewer bill. Water was billed at fifty-four thousand five twenty-four forty-three. And sewer was ninety thousand eight seventy-five eighty-three.
That's about every, up, down?
Yes. We're pretty much on target. We're happy.
Motion for favor of the warrant, please?
I have two, two bills to add.
Can't do the new business? Can't do the first?
All right. We can do that now. I need a motion to approve Nikon Falls School Training for Mr. Sorrell. This is to deal with water issues, water maintenance issues. You should have been copied with, with the, with that request.
Is it a total of four seventy or four seventy plus the room?
What we're looking at right now is, we haven't been billed, we haven't been vouchered for the, for the hotel.
Okay.
What I'd like tonight is approval for the class.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars. And we will approve the voucher in export meeting. But it should be around, the total should be around the seven twenty-eight dollars a night. Both of the seven.
I'm gonna drive down on Monday morning so I don't have to go there Sunday night. And I'm gonna be Wednesday. So, I'm only staying two nights.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the two hundred and fifty dollars for the class for Larry to go.
Have a second? We need a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
So, this one in?
So, then we'll, we have two invoices added to the warrant. What is the code for them? Oh, no, you're not paying me. Sorry. You add it. We're gonna add two bills to the warrant. One is two hundred and fifty dollars for the Nikon schooling for Larry from 10:24 to 10:26. Comes out of A9089.8.
A90?
Eight, nine zero eight nine point eight. Which is schooling. And we have a bill for our website maintenance from Aaron for a hundred and twenty dollars to come out of A1410.4.
Is the site being kept up?
Yes, it's up to date.
It's all up to date. Good. What was the amount of that? One hundred and twenty dollars.
Make that motion to accept the warrant with these two additional expenditures?
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion underway? There's a couple here. You'll notice on the first page, a bill, Midstate Industrial Supply, 339, that will be reimbursed from over town.
Speed tax.
Yep. And it looks like we used a lot of gasoline in the last month. But the first, on the second page, voucher number 138, the first one is for the fire department, which will be reimbursed, 42624. And the second two was a, was a late, was a late billing and then an early billing. So, that's why that is a little bit disturbed. Yeah? Any other discussion underway? A roll call vote, please?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Have a report from the superintendent?
I just all have a copy of my work report for the last month. And actually, all the water we're pumping hydrants right now. So, we will help them vary water. I talked to a guy at the conference. We went into Pot Stand last week on some turbine lowers for the wastewater plant. It's gonna get rid of all the fiddings. It's gonna cut our, cut our costs probably down to twenty percent.
Energy costs?
Yes. Yeah. It, it, there's, there's no moving parts. It's all just turbine. So, he's gonna be here constantly. We've got the next to go through. They're, they have a plan right here in Placerville where they build them. So, they're the people that the guys have put in the new lift station for the, the town. So, getting stuff prepped, ready. Waiting for my Alan to let me know when the grid is saying and order myself and get everything toughed up for the winter.
Yeah, you too. It'd be a good deal if you get a guy from Placerville that, you know, the factory manufactures these turbine engines or these turbine lowers. Might be good advertising for them to have on this course. That's good. It'll save us a lot of money. The cost effectiveness will pay for itself in a short period of time.
Just in energy costs, the, the electric, they're wrong.
The voters down there now are old.
They're two thousand, so they're eleven years old.
Any questions, Blair?
Just curious of what, what we were doing up at Kimpecks, up the road. Grinding, bringing the roadie? Yes. When, when the new road, the new section of road was put in, Kimpecks had a spot where they had tar. And what it was, it was stopping the water from going into the drain. And it was going down Mr. Filion's driveway. So, I made a groove through there so the water would track up their driveway because all the roof drains go, come into that front parking lot. So...
What can we do with the street between Pine and South? What is that?
Spruce.
Spruce that we paved. A nice crack right down the middle of the road. Water or ice gonna get in that. And we're gonna have a bigger crack. And we just spent all that money.
The only way of doing that is to grind it back down and redo the structure through there.
Can we put a crack in it?
Which is the best way to preserve this?
What it is, the water comes, we can put a, like a rubber sealer in the center of that crack. But the water's gotta go someplace.
Right.
And if it doesn't come out the center of the road, it's gonna, wherever they drive, it's gonna come out in them spots. So, it's gonna weaken it.
So, why did it crack already?
Infrastructure. Because it wasn't taking down like Elm Street. This village has a lot of clay in it. If you're gonna take it down...
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So, can we put some rubber stuff in there? Try and save it a little bit?
It's only in this end.
Yeah, it would help prevent dams through winter. Because water will get in there, it'll freeze. And they'll just push the water apart. So, it wouldn't hurt if you could do that.
We could probably get some, some of this up.
I was locking down it the other day.
A fair board man out. Tom Sears is over there. So, you can probably set me up with some good stuff. You don't want to put driveway stuff in it. It's not gonna hold.
No. Right. Not at all. Why do we not take it down? Do you know? Put the button on something?
I wouldn't charge them.
I mean, we really need to, I don't care if we make a policy, but there's no point in replacing these roads if we don't take them down. It's just, let's flush the money. Take it down and it was, and throw it down.
Was good enough to come in and do the paving for us. It was way after the right of the paving season.
It is difficult. And that's not gonna be a keeper of the rules and all that.
It's so soon.
Yeah. Anything else for Larry?
clerk read for a spine, please? Stop work order to Michael Oliver. Letter to Jason O'Connell regarding his property in 93 Church Street. JCEO Community Outreach Report for September. Correspondent from Paul Garrick regarding Eagle Scout George Garrick. Letter and invoice to Town Champlain regarding Block Manhole at Boardview Grocery. Notice of plain from Michael Oliver.
If I could just mention, look at the numbers on the JCEO Community Outreach Report. You can see how busy that office is. How many, how many clients are being handled there every day. And I think it's, I think it's a benefit here to have that office here. Actually, I would like to see that office here full time. But be that as it may, she is very busy next All right. Full business, GSE here. Town has not made nothing on the water district from the west end. So, we'll leave that under old business. Under new business, we need a resolution for the consolidated funding application, funding. We have, we have two. One is an Iserda energy study that we agreed to participate in meeting ago or last meeting, meeting before last. We are using, it's a fifty percent match. Am I right?
An Iserda, yeah. An Iserda will reimburse us up to fifty percent of the study. The cost of the study is eleven thousand seven hundred.
And we are using money from our shared services funding, leftover money for the shared services funding to, to pay for our part of that. The second issue is in this, and this is what we are looking for tonight, an authorizing resolution to New York State Parks and Recreation. Juanita and I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago on this funding application. And it's a common funding application, which we sent it in. And it goes to ten different state agencies. And the one that we are looking at, New York Parks and Recreation, is so that we can see if we can receive some funding to purchase some playground equipment and to construct a basketball court ice rink down in the center of the village on village-owned land. We need some clarification on that. But this is just a resolution to allow us to continue to investigate applying for this and getting this grant money if possible. The state has, what was the figure? How many million? Eight hundred million?
Eight hundred million. And it's divided into ten different categories?
Ten different districts, economic districts. So, I need a motion to authorize the village to go on with this resolution. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Second. Any other discussion on this?
I thought that, because I brought this up a long time ago to get some grants for the area, that we were not allowed to put any kind of permanent structures on that property because of the buyout.
I, we need some clarification on that. But I think it's dwellings, permanent dwelling structures?
Well, these will still float down the river, too, if there's a massive flood again. I think that's the point of that.
The playground will be put into the ground.
I mean, that'd be great. I'm, I'm thrilled. But, you know, I know that we looked at it years ago when I was pursuing it. We weren't allowed to put anything on the property. So, the rink had to be pulled up every year. We couldn't make anything permanent.
But you, you were able to be able to put in your grills and picnic tables.
Card bench to the playground.
That's, that's...
So, those are permanent structures.
But that's flood zone areas.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. This is by our property.
But we'll investigate that. We have a call in to...
It'd be wonderful. I'd be thrilled.
The office of the parks told me that you couldn't put any buildings on the property.
Right. From what I remember, I think it would be okay. But you're right.
We have clarification from Mr. Brown. We're gonna talk to him.
I'll have a call in to him.
Who was involved in that buyout at the beginning. So, we can, once that's clarified, we still like to have the, the resolution approved so that we can go from that point on. So, we have a motion. You have a second?
Yep.
On the papers, you can apply to saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number two on here, the resolution for Eagle Scout George Garrick. Will table until the November meeting. Need a resolution for New York State employees retirement. Juanita, would you explain that, please?
We need to add Kim on there as to her time. When she was reelected, she had to three months, keep her time for three months, in which we had figured out her time. We have to read, add Larry and I because we're in the timekeeping system because we're doing our time cards. And we had twenty days, which isn't supposed to be there. So, we had to delete that and just put that we're using the timekeeping system.
Need a motion for this resolution? Approve the standard birthday and reporting resolution.
Make a motion to approve the standard birthday and employment resolution.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Need a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gresinda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Okay, we've addressed the Nikon Fall School Training. I would like approval to send two employees to the Peru Water Class, St. Larry and Terry. Jimmy already has his hours. Larry and Terry need to update theirs November 2nd and 3rd. November 2nd, the cost will be sixty dollars a piece, a hundred and twenty. November 3rd will be seventy-five dollars a piece, a hundred and fifty. Need a motion to expend it, two hundred and seventy dollars to send the two of them to the school in Peru.
What, what wire is this for?
We have the line.
Just for the hours?
Contact hours.
Contact hours, six...
Six on one day and seven on the other.
Yeah, six on one, seven on the other.
And the code is F9089.8.
Nine zero nine?
Nine zero eight nine point eight.
What are we down to?
Two hundred and seventy dollars for two of them.
Will that drop us to, what we got next?
Oh, right down, we have a thousand dollars, a thousand fifty dollars in there.
All right. So, we did two seventy and we just did two fifty?
Yeah, but that comes out of the other school. That comes out of the highway school.
Okay.
I, I need a motion to extend the two hundred and seventy dollars to send them to.
Have a second?
Two hundred dollars out of F nine oh eight nine point eight.
Okay, you have a motion. We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Trombley? Trustee Grisenda? Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
Larry, how many contact hours do you need? Is it a year that you have to have?
I need thirty hours.
A year?
Thirty contact hours in three years.
In three years.
Yeah, and a, a C and D license, you need fifty contact hours.
Thank you.
The same period of time, three years?
What's that?
For three years.
For three years. If, if you go and you do get fifty contact hours in that three years, the fifty, the twenty doesn't roll over the next year.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So.
Okay, last order. I'm in New Business. Keep your presentation, Amy.
I, I would like to have authorization, please, to expend up to a hundred dollars for the community Halloween party, which would come, I know, I'm being safe. I'm cushioning.
Conservative.
I'll never spend that. Sorry, all that I just said. Larry, stop talking. Out of A seven nine eight nine point four, just allow up to a hundred. I doubt that I will spend that. You know, I normally don't spend anything. Last year, we had the money for it and I never turned in my receipt, so I ended up spending it all. If I could have up to a hundred dollars, it'd be nice. Thank you. We'll conclude posters so we get the advertisement out. I'd like to do something a little fancier than just a photocopy. Draw some attention to it.
This would be for a community?
Community Halloween party. Open to anybody.
Need a motion?
Make a motion for, spend up to a hundred dollars for advertising materials at this particular, for this community event.
Cider, include cider and donuts to serve.
A second? Any other discussion? I'm just concerned that it's a community issue.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanted a motion.
But it can't be a community?
No, no, that it is. It's a community. I know it is because everybody comes in.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you mean because it's at Saint Mary's?
Yeah.
Oh, well, it's just the building that we get.
Exactly.
It's free.
Let folks know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just so it's.
Yeah, actually, last year at the Halloween party, for those who are concerned, it caters to Saint Mary's kids. There was not one single Saint Mary's kid at the Halloween party. It was all.
Moors and people.
All the moors, Ross's Point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. For expanding funding, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Grisenda?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye.
That's all I have under New Business. Anything else? Any other issues to come forward, Board?
Just have one comment. If you're coming to the Fire District meeting tomorrow night, there's a budget hearing at six thirty prior to the seven o'clock meeting.
So what should I be at? Seven o'clock?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, the regular meetings, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, the budget hearing is open to the public if you have a question on the budget and.
Depends on what I'm doing here. Okay, any other business? Motion to adjourn? Have a second?
Second.
Long favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Do I have to sign this one here? Authorization.
Yeah, but I got the realtor all over here.
You're moving like me.
Yeah.
Are you coming tomorrow? We can.
Yeah.
We have payroll and everything, too.